All four of our students are here. So that's great. We can move right along. Is Andrew back?
I'll go too.
Okay.
This is like herding cats.
Yep, yep. We're almost there. Okay, Andrew.
Yeah, I'm working on this. There we go. Okay, I'm feeling challenged. So thank you all for staying with us while we were in our executive session to plan our interview of the four student candidates. Position of student school board member. All of the candidates are currently finishing their sophomore year at Ferndale High School. At this time, I would like them to introduce themselves by saying their names, and we'll start with Heidi.
Hi, my name is Heidi Maston.
Just pop in, students. Introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name is Jordan Thompson.
Hi, Jordan.
Hi, my name is Jacob.
Jacob.
Hi, my name is Kong Wen.
Hi, Kong.
So before we get started with the interview, I want to thank all four of you for your interest in serving on the Ferndale School Board. Our board deeply values the student voice, and having two students sitting side by side with us at every one of our meetings is an important way for us to keep this value at the forefront. We want to encourage all four of you to continue to exercise your voices to advocate for improvements in our school district. However, tonight, we can only choose one of you to join Evneat by taking a seat on the board for the next two years. So this is a way the interview process was going to work. The board members will take turns asking questions. We have a total of 10 questions, and each of you will answer each question, but not in the same order. So what we're going to do is we're going to go alphabetically on the first question, and then on the next question, the next student will go first in that list. So we'll start. This is our first initial order: Heidi, Kong, Jacob, Jordan. And then the second question will go to Kong, Jacob, Jordan, and then Heidi, and we'll just roll through like that. So no one is always first, and no one is always last. So and so because of the challenges posed on our Zoom environment where we see faces in all different orders on our screens, keeping track of that order might be difficult. So I've asked Dr. Quinn to help us with that aspect of the interview. If we lose our place, she'll remind us where we were and help us get back on track. So let's get started. Melinda, you're up first.
And Heidi is the first answer, the first person to answer.
All right, Heidi. So my question for you: What one issue do you feel the school board should pay more attention to, and why?
Yeah, I feel like the, what the school board like pay more attention to is sort of the issues like bullying and those sort of things because like, like many people like in the school board system, they don't really see what's happening within the schools. And it's one of those frequently things that I see that like, there's a lot of students like, they have a hard time. And I feel like things can be more like, bring up with like more kindness and with more awareness about bullying because like, 100 in 5 students get bullied in America. And I feel like bullying, it like, there's the, our curriculum for bullying, it only happens like once in like elementary, and it doesn't really get bring up much. So I feel like bullying could be more issued.
Thank you.
Linda, Kong is next.
Yes. Kong, would you like me to repeat the question? Okay, so what one issue do you feel the school board should pay more attention to, and why?
I think that the school board should pay more attention to how students act around the school. Is many students right now don't have the motivation to like work. Man, the school spirits, any like schools or like people, students don't have like spirits around to like participate in many classes. Most of the time, I see people just sitting at lunch alone and don't talk to one another. I feel like there is like this sense, like many people are scared of talking to one another and participate.
Thank you. And Jacob, what one issue do you feel the school board should pay more attention to, and why? Oh, one second, Jacob. Kong, were you finished? I thought you were, okay, I should have made it clear that you were finished with your answer. I'm sorry. So Jacob.
Alright, so I've been kind of like, throughout the past year of my sophomore year, I've been kind of like, you know, talking to a lot of people of how they feel about the district right now, and how they feel about it, and what side they're on. And I feel like, kind of bringing up all that, one thing I feel like the school board should kind of recognize right now is how people kind of feel about the school board in general. And some, I talked to a lot of people, and some people say like, that, like, feel like, like as like people who are citizens of Ferndale, they feel like they're not recognized by the school board, who like, like passes and stuff like that. And so as, as a person that's very cash about this stuff, I feel like one thing that needs to happen is to kind of compromise and try to find change in a way that doesn't make, make controversial results. So that's kind of my thought on that.
Thank you. And finally, Jordan, what one issue do you feel the school board should pay more attention to, and why?
I definitely say that like every student and every person in our community has a voice. Because I feel like talking to some of the kids in my environment and people that I have in my classes and stuff, they talk about a lot of feeling like they don't matter, feeling like whatever they say wouldn't make a difference. And I feel like for us, it's really important to bring that to the school board's attention and bring that to everybody's attention, that every voice has a difference in choices that we should make.
Thank you.
Jesse, you're going to start with Kong.
Okay. Um. What was it again? What are your accomplishments? Yeah, what accomplishments are you proud of?
What accomplishment are you most proud of, Kong?
Uh, can you clarify that? Like, you mean in like school in general, or like?
Like, in, in school.
Oh, okay. The commonest, I think that I have done, like, I, I most prowess is not only making connection with everyone around me, but also making connection with like individual teachers. I've always tried my best to be, like, achieve most in school and like have connection to each one of my peers and team.
Thank you.
Next, next is Jacob.
Jacob, what accomplishments are you proud of that you have in school?
Um, you know, kind of like, kind of like, one thing that I'm not just, you know, thankful for obviously, not, not I only have a voice, but one thing I'm very, um, thankful for, and I'm proud of when it comes to accomplishments and achievements is getting more involved into the district itself and kind of getting to know teachers and trying to improve as like a leader and trying to kind of, like, trying to find, um, not just compromise, also find a way to teamwork specifically ways and try to like, kind of listen to ideas and try to be even more open minded, you know, participating in activities, not just like of course, like, it's the, like, you, you have those, I feel like, I made so many great connections with a lot of teachers and a lot of staff, and so I'm very grateful for that.
Jacob, your sound quality is pretty difficult. I don't know if there's anything you can do, but it's really hard. The sound quality is really garbled. So, but Jesse, the next person you're asking is Jordan.
Jordan, what are you most, what are, what are you most proud of in your accomplishments?
Um, like Kong and Jacob said, having a relationship with my teachers, I really take pride in that, and I feel like it's important to fully get the learning that you need and kind of having that relationship for help whenever you need it. Also achieving a 4.0 all throughout high school, I've worked really hard on that. And I do play a travel sport also, so having to manage my time and stuff and maintaining that 4.0, I feel like has been a good accomplishment for me because I've learned how to do things, what's the word, like, do things on time and like have time, good time management and take care of all of my commitments that I need to.
Thank you. And Heidi? I'm guessing Heidi comes next.
Great.
Can you tell us about your accomplishments you are proud of?
As, um, I'm most proud of helping enrich the lives of others. I'm really grateful for being in leadership, and I love helping others and really trying to be strong and like resilient and help people when they're having a hard time and they really need someone. I'm really, I really like strongly love to be an advocate for people and always wanting to help others in need.
Thank you.
All right, Leanne, you're up.
Okay, and I'm
You're starting with Jacob.
Jacob. Jacob, my question is, tell us about someone who has been a role model for you.
Um, well, for, when it comes to like the school district, there's been so many role models, that's kind of hard to think of at this point. And because there's been so many inspirational figures that have, you know, helped me out. And I would say, I think one of the people that I kind of relate to a lot is Ms. Britt, who is the thrice and principal. Not only is she just an amazing principal, she's also a good student, but I feel like, as, as such, and I feel like she's very kind and very respectful, I feel like she understands, um, not just the student's troubles, but just that personally. And I feel like, I got to know her well throughout that past three years in middle school, and and I feel like, that's, I think she's a great example when it comes to a, an inspiration figure and as well a principal.
Thank you, Jacob. Someone suggested that maybe if you turned off your video, we might hear you better. So I think I got
it may be the connection, I'm sorry about that.
So Leanne, Jordan is next.
Yes, Jordan. So tell us someone who has been a role model for you.
Okay, um, I definitely say my older cousin, I think he's about 25 now, but he was, um, he was raised in kind of a difficult spot in California and, um, kind of when I was born and kind of grew up watching him and kind of learning from him and watching. He didn't grow up in a very well area, but he kind of took advantage of what he had and the opportunities that he had, and he's gone on to be very, very successful in his field through college and in his job now. So I've kind of, it's been a blessing to kind of watch him grow up and kind of feed off of his accomplishments.
Thank you. All right, I think I go to Heidi next, right?
You do.
Heidi?
Yeah, hi.
That you look up to.
Um, I would say the same as Jacob. Ms. Britt has been the person I've looked up to, like, since high school. She lives right behind me, and she has been with me through so much. I look up since I was like in middle school, I've looked up to her, she, we have so much things in common, she accomplishes so much. And she's one of those people that you can always look at and like, just admire everything about her. And I'm really glad that she is the role model in my life.
Thank you. And Kong, how about you? Who's a role model that you look up to?
I would say my dad. He's a really hard worker. He always pushes me to do like, at my best, even if like, sometimes I feel kind of down or like, the day is like bad. He always like, kind and like, takes cares of me of anything that I'm going through, or, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Kevin.
You're going to start with Jordan. Do we still have Kevin? Kevin?
I think Kevin's muted.
Yeah, that's right. There it is.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, sorry about that. So Jordan, my question for you is, what do you think are the characteristics of a good school board member, and why?
Um, I'd say definitely someone that's a good listener because you need to be able to listen to your peers and what they feel is needed to be talked about, and also be a good listener to have a conversation about the things we need to talk about. Also, being a good leader and knowing how to take control and value everybody's voice and their perspective, and being also a team player and knowing how to step back and let somebody else take the reins and listen to them and find out their values and what they have to say on certain situations.
Okay, Heidi is
Okay, thank you.
Heidi.
So Heidi, you need me to repeat the question, Heidi?
Um, no, thank you. I think the thing that a school board member like really value is being open minded. Like, even though like you have your views, like you also have to respect other people's views because they have different experiences in their life, and it would be really good to have, to be a listener and really open to what people say, and being a leader as well, and trying to stay on top, like when people don't have much to say, you could influence them about what you want to say, and then you can start from there to build up a conversation that can help, you know, help thrive what needs to be done.
Thank you. So Kong, you're next. And what do you think are the characteristics of a good school board member, and why?
I would agree with Heidi. I, to be like, open minded with everything around you, like everyone have different opinion and ideas, and we all need to like, respect each other. Like be a good leader and listen to one another and compromise through like, a specific idea that works through the best. And yeah.
Okay, thank you. So Jacob, same question. What do you think are the characteristics of a good school board member, and why?
Um, like, you know, like, all the three runners have been saying, like, being open minded is, that's, you know, fantastic trait, but I feel like, in order to be open minded, I feel like having respect is the number one thing for me personally. And I feel like this is a way to kind of, I feel like that this is the trait to kind of like, understand, kind of like, just both sides. And if, if, like, you know, some people like say, or just have the mindset, if like, somebody disagrees with somebody, they just immediately just get into a complete argument. But, um, but like, for me, I feel like just trying to, you know, understand that opinion and see why they think like, that's their mindset, or that's why that's their opinion, but still try to respect them because they are still a human being. And therefore, you can get more open minded and try to find, figure out a compromise if there are any difficult situations. So that I think respect is the biggest, number one.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm up, and I will go to Heidi. Heidi, what one suggestion do you have for improving the overall experience of students in our school system?
Um, I think one of the suggestions would be for everyone to like, be more, um, open minded to what students think, because I feel like a lot of the times, students feel like they're shut out. They don't feel like the adults like sometimes listen to them. And when like, kids look up to adults, they really wish the like, they could understand and really like, understand what they're saying and try to like, help their needs. And I feel like sometimes, um, the, the way, the, from adultism to like, a child, it's really hard for like, sometimes adults to really understand kids and what they mean when they want something to improve in the school system.
Okay, thanks. All right, Kong, what is one suggestion you have for improving the overall experience of students in our school district?
Uh, I would say the same as Heidi. Maybe have a way for the student to like, have a, not like have a voice, like have a voice in like, what is going on around the school, and then what like, happening, because like, some of the students don't, I feel like some of the students aren't opening up to like, what they actually feel, and then something, sometimes things just go without plans, and then people just feel shut out, and yeah.
Okay, thanks. Jacob? What is one suggestion you have for improving the overall experience of students in our district?
Um, I think one of the things to kind of prove overall with the district is that I see there's kind of been a lack of motivation without, through some students. And when it, when it comes to trying to make, trying to make change and trying to make improvements, and so, so kind of, so I think, yeah, because like, difficult thing is like, you know, somebody tries to make a promise and say, okay, here's, here's the thing, to kind of like, you know, help our kind of community for this school, and it, it kind of happens, and then it just kind of diminishes away. And so what I was thinking is trying to kind of, trying to get more groups together to try to, you know, try to motivate them to kind of improve, like, things that need to kind of be fixed, like, you know, kind of like with, like what Kong said, and kind of like what Heidi said. The thing with bullying and kind of like being an outcast, and because I've been in that position before many times, and probably even too much, and I feel like that, I feel that needs to get a lot of more awareness than it really does because some people don't really pay attention to that. And, you know, and also I just want, you know, students to feel like they actually belong in school. And kind of, you know, try to be more optimistic of not just in the now, but also in the future.
Thanks. And Jordan?
Yeah, I definitely agree with all three of the other candidates. And I mainly stand for what Heidi said about making the kids feel like they have a voice and like the adults want to listen to them. And as I said earlier, I feel like a lot of kids think, oh, my voice doesn't matter, what I have to say won't be heard. And I feel like it's very important that we bring that to light and make sure that everybody has a voice and that we check with the students to make sure that whatever plan we decide is going to benefit them for their education.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're back to Melinda.
Okay, so I am going to be starting then with Heidi again, is that right, Linda?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
No, Kong.
Kong, sorry, Kong. Carried with Heidi.
Okay, so Kong, what are your thoughts about how the district can encourage involvement and participation by students and families who haven't always felt completely included in our school community?
I feel like what they are doing now is a really good thing, like before, like all this pandemic thing started. Many students don't actually know how, I mean, don't know like, a way to speak with like, teachers or like staff members about problems they have, but until now, like emailing or like, those like surveys thing. I feel like it's a really good way for them, for everyone like to open up. Us, yeah. And also like, if we could like, have like, another system where like, students or like family member could like, just drop their ideas in, and like, wish for something to like, make change, or like beneficial for like, everyone. Yeah.
Yep. Um, Jacob, would you like me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
Okay, what are your thoughts about how the district can encourage involvement and participation by students and families who haven't always felt completely included by our school community?
You know, um, kind of like what Kong said, I feel like as a district, when it comes to activities, especially extracurriculars and clubs, I feel with the, that aspect, I feel like we've done a great job of having people being very inclusive. I, I just, you know, like, I feel like we've achieved at that. And for the people who, um, who get, you know, feel like they are a little bit dismissed, I feel that is, even though that is a very, I think, a kind of a minority of a group, I do think it does need a little bit of self-awareness. Like, I, like, in order to spread awareness, I feel like there needs to be more engagement through that awareness. I feel like we've done a great job with the announcements in that, like, and of course, like posting flyers all over the walls, and maybe have like, probably have like, more students like, come in like, in like, a middle of a crap classroom, like, even though that probably has already happened before, it's kind of talking about like, any extracurricular, any club, like just during Eagle Time, or just during first period, or during fifth period of like, saying like, hey, you know, this, you know, if you're interested in Math Olympia, join us. And I feel like, you know, that would also, I think that would be a kind of engaging way to kind of bring more self-awareness to that. Yes, but to that, to those, to that minority, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Um, see, next we've got Jordan. What are your thoughts about how the district can encourage involvement and participation by students and families who haven't always felt completely included by our school community?
Um, I'd say asking questions. I feel like that's a big aspect of trying to get everybody's voice and take on certain situations. aspect of trying to get everybody's voice and take on certain situations. Um, because I feel like sometimes some students or families feel like the ideas they might have might not be allowed or might be shut down, but if we can ask questions and kind of make a way to reach an agreement on something, um, to make everybody feel like they're included and really valued in the school district, I think that would be very important.
Thank you. Heidi, do you want me to repeat it?
Um, no, thank you. Um, I feel like being acknowledged is really big thing, like everyone else said, um, it's really important to feel heard, because when like, uh, people that don't feel like they're like, oh, being reached out to, they sort of float away from the community and everything that's being built for. And if you like, sometimes they don't belong. And I feel like if we welcome their ideas and if we say like, say what we want to say and then we actually get it done, then I feel like they would feel a lot more inclusive and a lot more welcomed and just way more loved to be in the community and all of the schools.
Thank you.
All right, Avneet.
Avneet, you're gonna start with Jacob.
Okay, so my question for you Jacob is, what do you think are the top two challenges that teenagers in Ferndale face today?
That, in my opinion, the two difficult things, first off, that students, uh, are, you know, having a difficulty of is, I think, pretty much, uh, I think it's, I, well, sorry, to, and I'm trying to rephrase that, uh, is, I think, just trying to feel like they actually belong and, and feel like they don't have value. And it comes to that situation right there. And I've kind of been in that place before, uh, I've, even though I've been a part of, uh, in such involvement with, um, like for example, middle school, I still felt like I didn't have value. And and I think that also needs to have more self-awareness. And I feel taking a great step at that with the no hate awareness, with the big heart and at the middle of the lounge at the high school has been a great example. And I feel like, uh, taking more progression with that situation is very important. And also, the second thing I feel is that students are having difficulty of is also, I think, is just that the teachers don't recognize them. I know that sounds like the, you know, the first difficulty. And, but, you know, uh, I feel with the, there's kind of a disconnect between the teachers and the staff and that they feel like the, um, because some, some teachers, um, or some students, I should say, sorry about that. Uh, they seem very afraid, uh, and they feel like they don't really connect with the teacher. Um, and on a personal level. And I've been through that a couple of times and I feel like that's where I struggle the most, is where I don't really know the teacher personally. And so I feel like that's also an important thing for students to, you know, connect with the teachers. And just, I, I feel like i- if you understand a person more, I feel like just the communication and understanding would be clearer. So, sorry for the, the long pauses stuttering for that.
Next is Jordan, Avneet.
Um, Jordan, what do you think are the top two challenges that teenagers in Ferndale face today?
Um, one I think is feeling included again with the voice, sometimes they feel like, oh, my voice won't be heard or I'm not important enough or that they're not good enough to have a voice or be heard. And then kind of, I already mentioned that, but the second one also not feeling good enough, I think, a lot with like social media and stuff. People look and they, or students compare and they get hard on themselves that they're not good enough as this person or they never will be. And I feel like making sure that everybody has value and feels like their voice is important and that they, who they are is valued and accepted. And I feel like those two are really, really important.
Okay, so Avneet, next is Heidi.
Um, Heidi, what do you think are the two top challenges that teenagers in Ferndale face today?
Yeah, um, I think the two top things, uh, students really face is, um, asking for help. It's, it's a really big thing, because I struggled with the two at first since middle, uh, when I was in middle school. It was hard reaching out to s- to teachers, because you often felt like you weren't heard. And there's also peer pressure and knowing if your questions are like stupid or like, or like you're not gonna be acknowledged for the way you want, want. Um, and the second thing is mental health. It is so hard to like get up and get dressed and go to school every day. It's so hard, um, trying to put on a smile on your face. And I feel like, um, there's a really big tie between school and your mental health. Because, um, a lot of the times it feels like your mental health shouldn't be expressed in school. Because if, say if you're like sad and you don't want to talk to a teacher about it, it feels like you're too much to them. When like really it's okay to talk to someone and it's okay to want for help. And I feel like students struggle a lot with that.
Avneet, then your last person is Kong.
Kong, what do you think are two challenges that teenagers in Ferndale face today?
I believe that the first one would be courage and insecurity, I mean courage. Because like, um, many students now don't feel like they are connected with like their teachers. And like, I've experienced this like problem like mostly every day in like my, the, the high school. Um, many students are like scared to speak up and also like believe that their answers are wrong, even though like the teacher like encourages them to like speak up and like give out their ideas. Um, another one would be determination. Students now are lacking that like skill or like, uh, they don't want to have like, they don't want to put efforts in whatever they do in school. I feel like that, uh, like determination is something that the, like, staff should encourage students to work on.
Okay, with that, a school board, I'm gonna check in with you. Um, we put a couple extra questions in in case our answers were short, but we've gotten pretty full answers. Um, I'm wondering if we can skip to Andrew's final question, or do you want to ask the other two? But, okay, so Andrew, I think we can skip to your final question.
All right, um, I just have to remember my order now, I've gotten off track here.
Twenty-two, and you're starting with Jordan.
Jordan, yep, I'm on it. Okay, Jordan, and you guys are doing great, thank you. It's, it's, it's hard to do all these questions and do it on the computer, but, uh, we appreciate your perseverance with this. So just in wrap up, uh, the final question, uh, is, is there anything you want to tell us that we didn't ask you or anything you want to ask us?
Um, well, I think I really take pride on, I, with my family, I have moved around a lot throughout, um, many different states. And I feel like that's really something that I take pride in, because I've learned how to adapt to different situations and make most of, um, situations. And also I am on a travel sport team, so I know how to value everyone and like use everybody's talents to reach a common goal and work with other people to achieve a common goal.
Great, thank you. Heidi, anything you, um, I'll read the question as it, as it was, anything that you want to tell us that we didn't ask you or anything you want to ask us?
Um, I feel like, um, one of the things is like, um, it's, it's really hard trying to like talk and like try to like be with people. And I feel like I experienced that a lot with like, that like helps me connect with other students, because I as well knows how they feel, or they're sometimes nervous and it's hard to talk. And, um, I've been through a lot that makes me really, uh, have a lot of, a different perspective to everyone else. I have been through so much that there's like, I cannot even describe it. And I've, I'm a good advocate for people to, um, know they're not alone and just to like keep on fighting until they keep holding on. And yeah.
Okay, thank you. Kong, anything you'd like to tell us that we didn't ask you or anything you want to ask us?
Um, I would like to add in that, um, I feel like the school boards just start like a way to like slowly implement like changes, not like just putting in stuff immediately. Because like many students and, I mean, even teachers are like one, uh, trying to get like used to like the changes. Like, for example, you can't actually, like, if, like, sometimes there is like immediate, immediate changes that like happens around the schools, uh, many students like feel lost of like what's going on or like what's happening. I feel like if there's like a change that is like happening, uh, we should like start it slowly until it, um, gradually get, uh, implemented.
Thanks. And Jacob?
Uh, first of all, I just want to apologize for stuttering that I've been uh, well, kind of just spitting out throughout these entire questions. Because kind of like what Heidi said, I'm not a very organized person when it comes to speech. But one thing that I do want to acknowledge is that I'm very passionate when it comes to all of these things. And like I've said before, the reason why I'm super passionate about all of these things, such as ASB, the district, all of these extracurricular activities. And just as a, just as a, just as for the high school as a whole, is because I really want there to be change. And I think that the, the district is not perfect. Uh, I'm not saying it's terrible, I think there's a lot of great things that have been happening with the school district. Uh, but I do think there does need to be some improvements in order to progress. And so for me, uh, even though, uh, I'm, I just from a kind of a speaking kind of format, I don't really portray myself very well. But when it comes to a collaborator and when it comes to being involved with these specific things, uh, not only do I want to improve the district and not, and not just give myself value, because I feel like that would just be a really hollow and egotistical thing. But I also want people to feel value, like they belong and that they also trust the district.
Okay. Well, that's the end of our questions and thank you all for your thoughtful answers. And you certainly haven't made our decision easy.
Thank you guys for the opportunity for this.
Yes, thank you.
So at this time, the board will once again go into an executive session for fifteen minutes or so. And during this executive session, we will be discussing candidate interviews. No decision will be made or action will be taken while we're in executive session. Following the executive session, we'll reconvene into our open public meeting to make our decision.
So board members, um, you, you received another invitation. So once again, we have to do what we did a few minutes ago and accept another meeting invitation. And then you'll come back here.
Okay.
Okay.
Simply leave this meeting, Kelly sent you an invite, go to that meeting and then come back to this meeting.
See you in the next meeting.
See you in the next meeting. See you in the next meeting. See you in the next meeting.
Andrew, I think you're muted still.
Now, I'm no longer muted. Some of you will regret that. So, thank you again for staying with us while we went into executive session to discuss the interviews of the four student candidates for our position on the school board. All of the candidates did an excellent job. And so, on behalf of the school board, I want to thank each of them for taking the initiative to apply, for being here tonight, and for their thoughtful responses to our questions. And I want to urge each of them to continue to be active voices for change in our school community. And I'll encourage Dr. Quinn to find a way to involve them, whether or not they're the student selected to sit on the school board. We need students like these four, where we want to increase leadership capacities in our district. I can't tell if that's my feedback or not.
You're okay.
It's okay, okay. So, at this point, I'll invite a motion regarding the appointment of... I'll invite a motion regarding the appointment of one of the candidates to the school board for a two-year term, beginning July 2020 and running through June 2022.
I will make a motion and like to also echo Andrew saying this was difficult decision to come to, but I would like to make a motion to appoint Kong Wen to serve as student representative on the Ferndale School Board.
All right, there's been a motion to select Kong Wen to be the student representative for the two years, beginning July 2020 and running through June of 2022. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, Kong, welcome to the board. And again, to the other three of you, you did a great job. It was, if we had four spots, we would have five students on our board, but we were restricted to two. So, thank you all for coming tonight and for participating in this. Dr. Quinn will be reaching out to you for other ways to be involved.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Kong. Okay. So, now we can move on to the next item, Waukesha County Detention Center Education Program Interlocal Agreement. The next item on the agenda is 7.02, Approval of the Waukesha County Detention Center Program Interlocal Agreement. The board has had the opportunity to read the agreement. At this time, I will call on Dr. Quinn to ask me a few words about this item and answer any of the board's questions.
This is an annual event. P189 runs the educational program for the Waukesha Detention Center and all seven... Am I muted? No. And all seven school districts sign an interlocal agreement to contribute to the cost of that educational program. So, you have approved this every year. It is a standard item. If it weren't on a special meeting, it would have been on your consent agenda. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a quick question. On the second page, it talks about how it's funded and that it's funded mainly by the state, but the extra and above is funded by the participating districts. Does that come from our own state apportionment, or does that come from levy? Or where does that money come from that we pay them?
Mark, it comes from the general fund, right?
Yeah, it's basically the enrollment, the... It's a FTE. It comes from our general apportionment from the state, like for any of our students.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
At this moment, we have no Ferndale students in the Waukesha Detention Center, but we still need to sign the interlocal agreement. They come and go throughout, you know, sometimes their stay there is short. We have not had anyone in the Detention Center since March, but I still need your approval of the interlocal agreement.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So, I would move to approve Waukesha County Detention Center Education Program Interlocal Agreement as attached here too and made a part of the minutes.
All right, it has been moved to approve the Waukesha County Detention Center Education Program Interlocal Agreement as attached here too and made a part of the minutes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So, the next segment of our meeting, 7.03, we will be reviewing and considering adoption of three administrative policies. The board has charged Superintendent Quinn with maintaining an up-to-date set of administrative policies and ensuring that they are appropriately implemented. As part of this work, Dr. Quinn and her executive staff let us know when the law requires us to change an existing administrative policy or add a new one. The three policies we will be considering tonight fall into those categories. These are policies all school districts in Washington State are required to adopt. So, board members have had the opportunity to review these policies in advance of tonight's meeting. The policies have also been posted on board docs for public review. So, at this time, I'll call on Assistant Superintendent Mr. Scott Britton to present Administrative Policy 2418, which deals with the waiver of high school graduation credits. The board first saw this policy at its May 26 meeting.
So, you first saw that policy before, and there's just a little bit of a change. Before it listed by itself, the 24 credits, as you know, were a 30-credit district with Ferndale High School. So, at the very top, there's just a little bit of a change. It addresses the 30 credits that Ferndale High School, but as you know, we also have two other graduation or diploma granting groups. One is our online program, which is Ferndale Virtual Academy. That is a 24-credit, so that's listed. And also, our Blended Academy, which is SOAR, as you guys know it. And so, both those are listed. That was just the adjustment. The rest of that is as the policy comes to us. And so, we just wanted to make those corrections so that that was in line with the Ferndale School District. And it's pretty straightforward. There will be procedures that come with that, but the policy's pretty straightforward.
I would just...
Two-credit waiver, sorry.
I would just add that when we last reviewed our policies, which was several years ago now, this was a recommended policy, and we just chose not to adopt it. It has since become a required policy, which is why we're asking you to adopt it now. And it allows us to, within special circumstances, waive certain graduation requirements.
Are there questions from the board? Yes.
I assume that there are people that ask to waive credits. And my question is, can you give an example of when they would not be granted a waiver?
So, the credits that are waived are non-core credits. As you know, this year, the state board made an emergency rule that sunset's at the end of July, that any credit can be waived, including core credits. But what happens now is some credits can be waived, that students will not quite necessarily meet the 30-credit. What happens, though, at times, kids will come forward and they will double up on classes, or they'll try to get to that 30-credit mark. And they'll take extra classes, but those classes may be a variety of, let's just say, PE classes. And when the counselors look at their course of study, there were options for them to take the required categorical credits. They have to take certain math and social studies. When they look at that, the counselor will say, "You have the option to take this." And the student says, "I really want to take this elective class." And the counselors and the principal say, "You really need to take this class. That's a required class." And they say, "Well, we'd like you to waive it." And the counselors and the principal say, "That's not going to happen, so we don't have to waive that class." But it's not a core class. Does that make sense?
But Melinda, it's usually an elective class. It's usually for a circumstance where a student has had some reason that it's hard for them to have earned all of their credits. It's...
There's not a use of it, I guess, is what I was getting at.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot of times, they can't fit it into a schedule when they're on a path to some next step, and it just doesn't fit into a schedule. Because it has to fit the schedule that they're applying, and sometimes the class doesn't fit that schedule.
I would say that it's used fairly judiciously rather than...
Oh, yeah.
You know, but...
You know, and typically, they're singletons, which means that is only offered a certain period. It's in conflict with another class. So, they go through the course of their study, and four years later, they get to the end and they look at that, and it's the right decision to...
Or they really need to take something else. So, anyway, and one of the reasons we didn't adopt it before is that there actually is also an RCW that allows a principal to make such a waiver. That's always been on the books. And so, we didn't feel it was necessary to also have it in policy, but it has since been required to be in policy. So, this really doesn't change a thing, because the high school principal has always, clear back to when I was a high school principal, had the opportunity to waive credits under an RCW.
Other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Are we doing these one at a time, Andrew?
Yeah, we're going to do them one at a time, yeah.
So, I move to adopt Administrative Policy F 2418, waiver of high school graduation credits. As attached here too and made a part of the minutes.
All right, there's been a motion to adopt Administrative Policy Number 2418, which deals with the waiver of high school graduation credits. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. At this time, I will call on Executive Director for Student Services, Dr. Paul Douglas, to present a new Administrative Policy Number 3424, which deals with opioid-related overdose reversal and is required for districts our size. Dr. Douglas?
Yeah, so Policy 3424, there was a RCW that is listed in that policy, and it basically states that any district that has 2,000 or more students needs to have an opioid reversal medication on their high school site. Currently, we are over 2,000 FTE, which would make us required to have that. Right now, that medication, and Narcan, the state requires you to have at least one set of that medication. We actually have access to two sets, and it is free. That gets donated to us from, Mergent is the company that gives that to us. So, the other component in that policy is if, for some reason, cannot obtain that medication by it being free or donated to us, then we're not required to have it. So, those are kind of the two main pieces in that. It is significant, you need to have a nurse administer it or a trained responder. So, each school should have at least one other responder besides the nurse. Jeremy has identified two people at Ferndale High School that could administer the medication after they are trained by our nurse, so...
Paul, I hate to ask this question, but do we have any plans to have that available at the junior high level?
Right now, it's not mandated to have it at the junior high level. It would be something that certainly the board and the executive team could consider having at that level. Narcan has been in place, and Walker Erickson, you might be aware of that. It's been in place for over 30 years. It's mainly been used by paramedics and emergency medical staff in the emergency room. So, it's been around a long time. The big access to Narcan in the schools is that it's now in the nasal form and not just the injector form. So, it's possible that it could be at the junior high level. It's just not mandated at this time.
Yeah, and I hate to even think that we would need it at the junior high level, but you know, with what I hear through our oldest son, who is working at Ideal Options, who deals with drug and narcotic dependency issues, and trying to get people off different drugs, you know, it's something that the safety of it is relatively high, and the life-saving ability of it is much higher for those that unfortunately are in the case of an overdose.
No, absolutely. And it's, you know, I've unfortunately seen it used many times. And it's an amazing reversal. It does save lives, so...
Because it saves lives, and a quick Google search of it, it's not that expensive. The one thing I didn't like in this was the policy saying that if we couldn't get it donated, that we don't have to have it. I would want that we do have it, that if we have to pay the $100 out of our budget to have it so that we could save a child's life if we need to, I think we should have that. And I do agree with Kevin that I think it's needed at the middle school as well. Given that we have a high school, two middle schools, and we already have two doses there, I think that one more dose is... I would be in favor of that.
And I think that's something that certainly could be in procedure, that you extend it down to both middle schools, both the Horizon and Vista, that they have at least one set on hand. So, that essentially, it'd just be advocating for another two sets.
So, I'm not sure what the process would be for that, other than to send this recommendation back to Dr. Quinn, and then for us to address the required policy for the high school tonight, and then ask them to look at what it would take to have it available in the middle schools. So, thanks for both of you bringing that up. So, at this point, I'm open to a motion regarding the administrative policy before us.
I would like to make a motion to adopt F 3424 as attached here too and made a part of the minutes.
All right, it's been moved that we adopt the new Administrative Policy 3424, which deals with the... Okay. Anyway, we have a policy before us, I mean, I'm sorry, a motion before us to adopt Policy 3424 as attached here too and made a part of the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, to present the third administrative policy under review this evening, I will once again call on Dr. Douglas. And he will present a revised Administrative Policy Number 3416, which deals with medication at school.
Okay, so, in this policy here, one of the big changes is they added sunscreen into the policy, which wasn't in there before. And then, the other piece of that is they added a medication, marijuana. Medication is marijuana is now recognized, or medical marijuana is recognized. It can be administered at a school facility. There's another policy that will align to this one. It's called, it's 3423. But before we presented that policy to you, it needed to be revised and reviewed by the executive team before bringing it to the board for approval. That's why you don't see that there tonight.
So, questions?
Yeah, if I can bring up one question with it, you know, part of the review of this policy is to bring it up to current and up-to-date. And it seems odd to me that we're talking about sunscreen and things with it, but in order for my kids to take an aspirin or a Tylenol when they have a headache, they have to have a written note with my permission. They have to have a note from their doctor. Even to take a Benadryl if they've got allergy issues. It seems to me, at the high school level or at some level, that seems a little crazy, and not to take it out to, you know, other extremes, but there's other medications that the school can talk to them about without even me knowing about. It just seems that we should update it, that somewhere, that over-the-counter type stuff, at least for at some age level, you know, doesn't have to be go through this whole process. I was thinking, you know, in the sense of, you know, for those ladies that have issues at certain times of the month, you know, it's a common fact, or at least in the circles that I go in, that, you know, the anti-inflammatories, whether it be Tylenol, Ibuprofen, whichever, that they need those things. It seems crazy that we have to either, you know, tell our kids, "Well, just don't let anyone see you take it," or, you know, that we can't have some sort of bringing that up to date so that it seems more accurate and appropriate. so that it seems more accurate and appropriate.
Other comments or questions? So Kevin, excellent point. I'm, I'm not sure that's addressed by this policy. And this is a policy that we're required by law to have in place. So again, we could have that discussion with Dr. Quinn?
Well, it is addressed by this because it does say over-the-counter drugs.
Paul, do you have any comment on that?
Uh, I, I think as we look at, if you want to review, you know, the over-the-counter medication, I, I think that's, you run into some different areas around there. I mean, I understand what Dr. Erickson's saying around being able to take certain medications. I think one of the reasons that we have those strict procedures in place is so that some students don't bring and abuse that, those procedures. And so it makes it difficult. There's a fine line in there and I think that's, that's why we bring these board policies forward and talk about the procedures.
Kevin, I would be willing to go, we'll, I'll go look at the procedures that we have with this and maybe, maybe you can table this one till the end of the month if you want.
The other thing is the over-the-counter medication, just, just as a clarification, the over-the-counter medication can be taken at school by the student as long as they're with the nurse. So as long as they fill that form out, they can take over the counter medication.
All right, is there consensus that you'd like to table this and revisit it at the meeting on the 30th?
I, I'm, I'm open either way. I just feel like if we're going to address the things, it would be nice to have that addressed a little bit. You know, in my mind, it just seems kind of crazy, but you know. And maybe the procedures.
Kevin, I'm not prepared to talk right now about what the legal ramifications are. And if there are some RCWs, I'm not, I'm not prepared to go into.
No. And my, my apologies, I didn't, I didn't mean to spring it, you know, as a big thing that way. I just think, you know, I, I'd be in that way, be in favor of tabling it until we can get a little more information that way because maybe there are RCWs. It tells what we have to do that way.
That's fine.
Okay, well, at this point, we'll table this until our June 30th meeting. All right, the next item on the agenda is 7.04 and this deals with awarding, awarding the bid for construction of the secure vestibules that are included in the 2019 bond as part of the safety and security improvements. Board members have had the opportunity prior to tonight's meeting to review the bid tabulations and read the subsequent recommendation from the district. And at this point, I will call on Assistant Superintendent for Business and Support Services, Mr. Mark Dibok, and Project Manager, Mr. Tex Latish, to present a summary of the bid for the secure vestibules that the board is being asked to consider this evening.
Thank you, Andrew. I'm going to turn it right over to Tex and he is going to walk us through the, the process very briefly and, and give you a summary of the, of the bidding. It, it turned out very well. We had good, good competitive bidding and, and things came in favorably for us. So Tex?
Sure, I'll try to keep this very brief. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So the, the Secure Vestibule Improvements Project included eight projects at the school, seven at the district, seven schools and the district office, where we are working to improve the safety and security at the entrance, including electronic hardware, video security, buzz-in entries, second set of doors, controlled access through the office and some great improvements that I think are going to be very, very positive. We went to bid on May 27th. Our bids came in just this last week, June 10th. And the base bids, we were very pleased, we got three bids on the project from Dawson Construction, Poddle Construction and Tiger Construction. Excuse me, Poddle and Sons and Tiger Construction. We're pleased to get that kind of coverage. And all the base bids were relatively close. If you've had a chance to look at the bid tab, there's more variance in the alternates, but very, very positive results. And the best part of all is they came within our budget, including the alternates. And that's really good news. We are very, very pleased to see that. The, if you approve this tonight, the base bid along with the two suggested alternates, if I can, I just mentioned what those alternates are. The first alternate is actually a secondary access, electronic access control on the secondary door. Once someone is buzzed in, it gives the people in the office a little additional security. And then the second alternate is at Skyline. And if you've been there, you, you know, you don't know where the entry is and this is a canopy and vestibule entryway that makes it real clear where the front door and the front entry is. But if you do approve those tonight, we're set for the pre-construction meeting tomorrow with the, with the low bid, which is Tiger Construction. And they will launch right in, will basically have two months, try to get this done by the end, a little over two months by the end of August before school starts. And they're poised and ready to, ready to run with it. I'd be happy to tell you more, but why don't I just ask if there's any questions considering the late hour and can go from there.
So I have a question. I was just wondering if you have a sense of why Tiger's, that second alternate was so significantly less than the other two?
Well, we don't know the details, but we got, we asked a little about that and apparently they had some, some significant costs that they actually included in their base bid that had to do with the alternate, the concrete work. And for whatever reason, that's such, I, I don't know if it was a mistake or a choice they made, but they put that in. So the base bids might have been, probably were a little bit further spread. And then that would have made the alternates a little bit closer had they categorized it that way. But they are confident, they'll stand behind their numbers. It's a pretty simple structure they're doing for that alternate. And they said, we are, we're good to go and they're very positive about it. They're actually excited to get going and helping us out.
Other questions? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
So I'll move to accept the bid Tiger Construction for construction of the Secure Vestibule Improvement Project in the amount of $670,000 base bid plus $30,000 for alternate number one, $41,000 for alternate number two, for a total of $741,000.
All right, so it's been moved to award the bid to Tiger Construction for the construction of the Secure Vestibule Improvement Project in the amount of $670,000 base bid plus $30,000 for alternate number one, $41,000 for alternate number two, for a total of $741,000. All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item on our agenda, 7.05, deals with the issuance and sale of more of the general obligation bonds approved by the voters in February of 2019. You will recall that the total bond measure passed by voters was in the amount of $112 million. The district issued the first batch of approximately $3 million worth of bonds in June of 2019. Tonight, the district is asking the board to approve the sale of the next batch of bonds. So I'll call Mr. Dibok to present the matter to the board and answer any questions.
Thank you, Andrew. And you probably recognize a couple of familiar faces that are here with us tonight to provide some information and answer any questions that you may have. Cynthia Weed and, and Dave Tregasar. And I'm going to turn it over right now to Dave to walk you through the proposal for the second sale of bonds.
Thank you, Mark. This is Dave. Hopefully everybody can hear me okay. Pleasure to be here tonight. And I thought I'd provide a little history and then talk about the proposed measure tonight. You may recall, as Andrew mentioned, that the board issued the first phase of bonds last year, which generated, it was about 39 million of bonds, but it generated $47 million of proceeds for the capital projects fund. We have planned all along three phases of bonds to fund, to fund the total $112 million capital projects deposit. The rationale being we're minimizing the interest expense on the bonds when they're issued by, by phasing the bond issue. And that will generate some interest earnings for the capital projects bonds when they're closed and are also mindful of the interest rate environment for the bonds when they're issued. Last year, you know, when we closed the bond issue, we were near all-time lows for the bond market and the true interest cost on those bonds was about 2.7%. Very good, much lower than we projected to the electorate when the bonds were voted. I guess the only good news in today's world is that interest rates are even lower than that. We're projecting about 2.25% for the bonds. However, those rates will not be locked in until the bonds are actually priced and sold later in August. So our proposal is, and the process is nearly identical to the one we went through a little over a year ago. Cynthia Weed, I'll introduce her in a minute to talk about the only actual item that is needed, which is the bond resolution. Once that is passed, it leads us on a path of a process of issuing the bonds. We go through the bond rating process. We get the state guarantee through the state treasurer's office. We prepare disclosure information for bond investors. Once the rating is assumed, we release that information to the public and bonds are priced and sold and closed. And we currently anticipate closing those bonds late in August where additional proceeds are made available. That's the general timeline. I'd be glad to answer any questions about that process before we get into the, to the action item. Hearing no questions, I'll introduce.
Well, I guess I'll just, I mean, so this is felt to be because of interest rates and everything else, the, a great time to do this. This is going to be beneficial for us as a district.
We planned all along to issue the second phase of bonds this year. We moved up the timeline by a few months to essentially capture the current interest rate environment, which, and the reason for that being that with the pandemic, with the slowdown of economic activity, interest rates are at their all-time lows. And there's been delay and not a huge amount of bonds in the bond market right now. And so that supply-demand relationship is working in favor of the bond market. And so with all those things together, the recommendation is that we still continue to issue the same amount of bonds we planned on issuing this year, but moving up the sale by about three to four months.
Thank you. Belinda?
No, that one, this might be a question from Mark, but I know one of the questions or suggestions from the bond oversight committee was having a financial advisor to express or to, to be in our, the school district's best interest. Are we going to be having a financial advisor involved with this?
No, we're not. Yeah, and I'm, I don't know if Dave or Cynthia want to weigh in on that as well. It's, it's not a requirement. And in our assessment based on the information we've got right now, it would be an additional cost and not really provide any benefit to the district.
What would the cost be on it? Do we know for? Do we know what the cost would be to have a financial advisor weigh in on it?
Looks like Cynthia's about to say something.
Sometimes silence is golden. I, I, I think in this case, the, the way the structure of the sale is, is set up, in other words, with a negotiated sale with DA Davidson, is near as I can tell at this stage. The only benefit that would, and pardon me if I'm just expressing my opinion here, the benefit, the only benefit that you may have would be using your financial advisor as quote-unquote "a second voice" as a pricing advisor. That is to say, looking at it independently, do you think that DA Davidson is fairly pricing the bonds? And, and that's because you already have a relationship with DA Davidson, who has been underwriting your bonds for some time. And, and, and doing a good job of that. And mind you, that, that the financial advisor in this case, the, the way you currently structured your sale of bonds probably wouldn't add a lot of upside in that sense other than just potentially coming in and saying to the superintendent and Mark, I think that's a fair price that you're getting for your bonds. If you, if you somehow, if, if Dave is retired or somehow you decide you want to really rethink your entire bond issuance process, then it might be beneficial. But at this stage, it probably wouldn't add much overall value in, into your whole pricing mechanism. As for what it costs, that really depends upon how you use their services. It can be, I, I, the financial advisors out there do charge substantially. You might find one who could act very economically, but in general, it would, it would certainly be in the nature of at least five figures is what I would say. And, but that's not to say I'm recommending that you don't have a financial advisor. I'm just suggesting that at this stage, given the structure of how you're selling your bonds, it probably doesn't add a lot of value to this. Although, i- if it makes the board feel better or if it makes people feel better, then, then you would say, let's, let's go ahead and do this. But I would say, given the long-term relationship that you've had with DA Davidson, they serve you well.
Being relatively new here, how long has our relationship been with DA Davidson?
All of my career.
And it goes back substantially beyond that. I'm trying to, trying to think myself and I think it, it goes back. I know I've been working with Ferndale School District all of my career and it's been a very long time. And so, and so I, I don't know if Dave has a particular recollection of when he started working with the district, but it's, it's been a substantial number of years.
And I will just add that historically, when there's been an opportunity to, and I'm not going to know quite the right words, but to shift the bonds or to sell the bonds and get other bonds to save the community money, we, they have brought that to us and that has happened on numerous occasions. Finance the bonds. Oh, the last sale of the bonds, the last, we, we got a better rate than just about anybody I know. I, it's just another person to hire to say, you can trust DA Davidson. And I, I just, Mark and I do not think we need that.
I guess one of.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
I, because at this point, this would be almost about two-thirds of the bonds that would have been sold from the, right? Okay. I wish we had had resolution on the debt policy, I guess, now, before this. I mean, I understand and I am, I understand the benefit of selling the bonds now so that we can get the low interest. And I appreciate the, the long, good relationship that we have had. It's just these are questions that are in the community and these are questions that our bond oversight committee has put toward us about having a financial advisor. So I think it's my responsibility to ask those.
I think you did adopt the, but the debt policy.
We, we.
No, they sent it back to the bond. No, they sent it back to the bond-
We sent it back.
And that was partly my fault because I said last month, I don't get why we need this.
Well-
So I accept responsibility for it not happening as well.
The debt policy we wrote does not say that we will have a financial advisor. Now, maybe it doesn't because we'd already, so.
And I, I just make another point is, is that I'd be very willing to explain the to the debt, the committee, sort of the processes for how bonds are sold and how the various roles of the various participants are. And even to provide examples of districts, there's no one way in which all districts sell bonds. In other words, you have a variety of methods for selling bonds. And so you can evaluate it. What I can say, based on my many years of being in the business here, is that the whole process for how bonds are issued and the economies of it and the relationships that are out there are effectively very strong. And I have not, in all my years, really experienced any, how shall I say, any, any circumstances under which an underwriter has not actually fairly priced a bond issue. That's not to say that you might want to get some comfort in that for people who are not familiar with the process. But in this state, I would say, the whole process is extremely clean and extremely economical. And I've, I have experience around the country and I would say that Washington is, is very frugal, very economical, and gets good service from all of its professionals.
Mark, did you introduce Cynthia and her role? Mark?
Not, not this time. And that's, I, so Cynthia Weed is, is the, our bond counsel has been, as she stated earlier, for longer than any of us currently here have been with the district.
She doesn't work with DA Davidson. She's our-
No.
No, I, I, I'm a lawyer.
Yeah.
I represent you. I am your lawyer associated with the issuance and sale of bonds. So we're independent. We don't deal with the money at all. We just draft long legal documents and ultimately provide opinions to the investors as well as the district about how you have complied with state and local laws, as well as federal securities laws and tax laws. So our opinion is stamped on the bonds as to their validity. So we're not your general counsel. We're just a special counsel that you use in connection with issuing financial obligations.
Cynthia, do you work with multiple school districts then?
Oh, yes, many.
So I've got another question for you then. That's a good question. So somebody that I had been talking to had said that using a financial advisor was a best practice for school districts in the state of Washington. What do you say to that?
Um, how do I answer this politically? I think it really depends upon the process by which you are going to sell bonds. And that is, if you were going to sell bonds in a competitive sale, that is, you were going out to the whole market and just putting the bonds up for bid, then in effect, you would need a financial advisor. You would need to have that financial advisor guide you through the overall process. In Washington, the substantial, and this has been the case since the 1980s, the vast majority of bonds in Washington are actually sold through a negotiated sale process where you select an underwriter and work with that underwriter to get the best pricing for your bonds. And Ferndale School District, as well as probably the substantial majority of all of the districts in Washington, will select an underwriting firm and work with that particular underwriting firm as opposed to doing a competitive sale. I'm not here to say that one is right or one is wrong. I, I don't, you know, I don't necessarily think that a competitive sale always yields the best results or otherwise. And quite frankly, based on my experience, until relatively recently, there were extremely few really good and capable financial advisors. And so what we found is that underwriters who had a lot of experience effectively want to maintain that relationship with the schools. And they want to have a good reputation because if they didn't do a good job, other school district would hear about it. And so quite frankly, you have very established underwriting firms who really do a good job and deserve the reputation that they have. And, and again, that's not to say that one is right or one is wrong, but we don't have the kind of experience that we might see in Texas, or in Louisiana, or Tennessee, or other states across the, across the country. And that is, it's, it's an economical process and it just depends upon established relationships and built on trust. So in effect, if someone said to you that it is best practice and it should happen, it's likely to be a financial advisor who suggested it. And it happens to be, we have somebody in the state treasurer's office who was a financial advisor, who is now promoting that, promoting the use of financial advisors. And I know because I've been at several board meetings where I've actually had someone say, well, I got a call from the state treasurer's office saying, why don't you have a financial advisor? And that's because it has historically, and he came from California, and in California, everybody has financial advisors. Maybe they're more, and so it's, it's, it's a practice that varies from state to state. I would say in the state of Washington, it has not been the majority of practice. I'm not suggesting, and I know there are good financial advisors. And I think frankly, if you were a very frequent bond issuer, that is, if you issued bonds, let's say you were Lake Washington, or excuse me, Issaquah. Issaquah School District has what they call a pricing advisor. They negotiate the sale and they've, and Lake Washington consistently, because they're, they're a large issuer who sells bonds quite often, they essentially have a pricing advisor come in as an independent financial advisor. They don't do the work, but they do come in and they give a report that says, we've looked at the pricing and we think it's a fair pricing. And so it is, and so you will find that if you were a, if you were, what I would refer to as a frequent bond issuer of very substantial bond sizes, then you might think, let's, let's take the extra cost of having a financial advisor come in and tell the board that the pricing is a good pricing. And that makes the, the district feel more comfortable. And again, there, if, if you feel, if, if the board or if the superintendent and finance director feel like, you know, I'd like a finance, a pricing advisor to come in, I'd say, I could give you a couple of names and you could have a pricing advisor if it made the board feel more secure. In connection with a negotiated sale like you have, the role of the financial advisor is much more limited and is usually more limited to being like a pricing advisor. On the day of pricing, you tell, you tell the superintendent and Mark, yes, that's a good price. It's good to accept that purchase offer or to negotiate fine terms. But as I said, it's a, the reputation of the underwriters here in Washington and the process by which bonds are sold is actually a, it's a very efficient process. And, and we just don't find people getting outside the lines. You see what I'm saying? They stay within the lines and they do a good job, primarily because it's your reputation with your clients as well as all of your other potential school district clients out there, that you have to do a good job. If you were off in pricing, the word would get out pretty fast.
I want to remind you that the last time we sold a batch of bonds, our price was 67 cents per thousand less than what we projected with our voters.
Yes, yeah.
So I'm wondering if, Mark, I'm sure this will be a topic of conversation, if Cynthia could be available to talk to the bond oversight committee in this regard as well?
Her offer did not go unnoticed by me.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I, I think I benefited from what you said now, definitely. And things were much clearer to me on why. So yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
And the sale is slated for a couple of months from now, correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, the current pricing schedule is that we price bonds on or about August 5th.
Okay. So, so we could have that conversation still? So Mark, is this-
But we do need-
We need a motion-
Resolution tonight.
Or we need a, a motion to adopt resolution number 14-2020, delegating authority to superintendent and/or the assistant superintendent for business and support services, or limited time to insure and sell general obligation bonds of the district in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 32,500,000. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion that will be exactly like I just said.
But that's not what I'm going to read.
What's that?
I was trying to read along. It's written differently if we're going to read off the-
Well, you can make your motion.
No, Kevin's going to do it.
I'll go ahead and so move. I don't have the, the paper in front of me, so I can't quote you, but I know it's there in the minute or in the agenda, so I'll so move.
Would you like me to do it, Andrew, and I can just read it off?
Sure.
I move to adopt resolution number 14-2020, issuance and sale of unlimited tax general obligation funds of the district in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 32,500,000 as attached here too and made a part of the minutes.
Okay, it's been moved that we adopt resolution number 14-2020 for the sale of general obligation bonds. And my version is different than yours, so I will just summarize, but not repeat your exact one, but the sale not to exceed 32,500,000 as attached here too and made a part of the minutes. So all in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. So any inquiries about the issuance and sale of bonds may be addressed to Mr. Deepak. So the next item on the agenda, does anyone want to order breakfast? All right, keep going. Okay. The next item on-
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Cynthia.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll be in for the invite tomorrow.
Mike, Mark, should I be listening to the next item about the EPNO?
Probably wouldn't hurt, yeah.
I'll just hang, I'll just hang around. I'll, I'll try to stay awake. I'm in Montana, but I'll try to stay awake.
Okay.
Kevin, one of our board members is in Montana.
All right, so the next-
An hour later here.
Wah, wah, wah. The next item on the agenda is 7.06. This is a continuation of our discussion about rerunning the educational programs and operations replacement levy. And just as you know, the voters did not approve the Ferndale District levy in February 2020, which was set at a rate of $2.50 per thousand. We are allowed to run a second chance levy during the 2020 calendar year. The bond initially decided to rerun the levy on April 28th at a rate of 2.17 per thousand for four years, down from the 2.50 per thousand we'd asked for in February. When the pandemic struck in March, we made the decision to pull our levy from the April 28th ballot. Subsequently, we decided to rerun the replacement levy on the November 3rd general election ballot. However, we have not as yet officially set a rate for the duration of the, or the rate or the duration of the levy. So at our meeting on May 26th, we read a letter from the Support Ferndale Schools Citizens Committee recommending a rate of $1.50 for two years. At that time, we discussed the changes in the economic climate in our community, state and nation since February. We also considered the potentially negative implication of a lower levy amount on programs for students and jobs for the school district employees. Since our agenda for, for May 26th advertised a discussion rather than a decision, we agreed that we would decide on the rate and duration of the November 3rd levy at tonight's meeting. And with that in mind, I'll open it up for discussion.
So we've already lost a bunch of district employees, unfortunately, but with the 1.50 rate, what else would we lose?
Art Quinn?
The cuts that we've made so far, the assumption that we wouldn't have a levy at all, because we have to make, we have to make commitments to staff members by the spring for whether or not we'll be able to employ them next year. If we were to pass the $1.50 levy, it's impossible to say right now, given predictions from the state of more budget cuts, and it's, it's impossible to say exactly what will happen. But the $1.50 levy won't necessarily create any more cuts. It might let us stay where we are. I don't want to promise, because I don't know what's going to happen with the state, but the $1.50 would allow us to stay where we are and, and restore, if, if we kept all of our state funding, restore some of the things that we have had to cut. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
As we thought we were, the cut had to be made as though we weren't going to have any levy dollars.
And I know, I know you can't, we don't know exactly what the state is going to do, nobody. But have you heard rumors or like a be prepared for this percentage or anything from the state so that we have any sort of idea of what the state's going to do?
We've just been told to prepare for cuts in our state funding, not, not the amount, no.
In the, in the 2008 recession time, what were the percentage cuts from the state then? Do you recall about?
Mark, can you help me? It was, it was interesting because they cut and then they gave back and then they took back and then they, we got federal stimulus dollars and then the state.
Yeah, the, basically, and that's one of the rumors. And I, it's probably being hinted a little heavier than even being a rumor. But the, the, any federal money that we receive, like CARES Act money or any other supplemental money will more likely than not be offset with reductions from the state. So I think that's probably a pretty sure bet based on what people are saying. And that's pretty typical to what happened in the, the last round of the ARRA funding. So the ARRA basically provided a bit of a step down that relieved the severity of the one-year cut that we would have had from the state. We, we had a couple of years to basically transition down. So they haven't, we don't know what, but we know there will be.
My personal thought on this is I haven't seen or read anything that would really truly suggest a significant improvement in our economy before the election. I mean, it, it seems to me we have a daily gain and then a daily loss, and then a little bit of a gain and a little bit more of a loss. And it's just back and forth and not consistent. So I, I guess where I'm going with that is I don't, I don't know that we can look at our community and feel like we're going to be in markedly better shape in a couple of months to warrant a higher rate. So that's my thought on it is, I, I don't feel like, I've seen anything that would suggest we can raise a rate and be successful at this point.
I think as a school district though, and schools being the center of a community, we have a responsibility to make sure that we hold it together. And I want to make sure that we hit that spot where we can hold it together. and get us through this without being another burden on the taxpayers in the community with everything else that we have been hit with. So it's just, it just feels like a very precarious teeter totter to be on.
Yep.
What is the rate now right now?
Two seventeen.
Let's just start off. Let's I'll just say two.
Open it for discussion. Is that a formal motion already? Is that a point of discussion?
Oh, let's just discuss for now.
Okay. Okay.
I don't I don't know where to begin.
I feel like for me personally, I would be like, sure, yes, let's do it. Let's do the two dollars, but I don't think that I think with Intalco and heck, the layoffs from our own school districts. That's tone deaf to a lot of people out there that are hurting just from Intalco and the the school district. That doesn't even include, you know, people that are in hospitality and such that.
R P P.
Oh, of course, and the end of the layoffs.
Yeah. So I would take it down from there maybe.
I I appreciate that knowing the passion that the community committee had to pass this levy and the rate that they wanted and that they've recommended a dollar fifty. I respect that. I Jesse, like you, I would like it to be higher. I want something to pass. I don't want us to not have a levy. I think that's even more devastating. So I think a dollar fifty considering what's the community advisory, the levy that he suggested seems like as good as we might hope for right now. And I appreciate the two years because maybe in two years we will be able to pass something at a higher level. Maybe people will want more services. Will want their students to have more opportunities that a higher levy could provide.
I also like the two-year thing because there were people that were arguing that they didn't like February elections. They didn't like special elections. That's expensive. Why do we do it that way? And for everybody that argued that one, one, I hope they've been paying attention what has happened since we failed in February. If we were to always run our levies in November, we would always have to do reduction in forces, and we would always have to go through this every year. So I I think we need to get back to that February vote as soon as we can, but not in twenty twenty-one because asking for it in November and then asking for it in February two, three months later would not go over well, but the following February people need to be ready and know that they will be asked for another replacement levy, hopefully at a higher rate so that we can restore some things for our kids.
What about one seventy-five? And then people will be able to keep their jobs and maybe we'll get to bring some people on. It's just for discussion.
Yeah, you know, I I I agree with with you and Leanne, and I'm I'm sure Melinda and Kevin, I would like to see a higher rate. I think our committee and our community have have passed the word to us for the most part, and there are certainly people who want us to run a higher level levy, but I think the majority of the voices I hear are a dollar fifty. And, you know, I think two years is a reasonable timeframe because, like like we've all said, we don't know what the economy will look like in two years, and so we don't want to completely strap the school system at a dollar fifty for four years. We we've had a rich history of having great services, and the things we're getting rid of are all our support services and our equity-based services, and that's, you know, our core services are hanging tight, but we've really gotten rid of a lot of a lot of the support and things that made us unique. And that's a shame, but I I think, given where we are, it feels like to me a dollar fifty for two years is is the route to go.
Well, unlike Leanne said, we need to pass this.
Yeah.
And the a dollar fifty might be more palatable that we can pass that. If we don't pass it, then we absolutely have to run something in February for the next year because we're not going to go for two years with nothing.
Yeah, for sure.
So, you know, November, a dollar fifty, pass it so that you don't have to hear from us again for another fifteen months. And then people can feel what the school district is like with that dollar fifty, and hopefully by that point, we will have better economic times, and we will also more clearly recognize what a levy pays for and that it's worth it. And when I say we, I mean the voters. I think we understand.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's tragic the cuts that we've had to make already and what it's going to do to the kids, but, you know, we we have to respect what the voters have told us as well. I I think we have to listen to the community levy committee. And because they, you know, they're passionate about what what those dollars fund and and their efforts towards it. But I'm not I'm not sure we can pass anything over a dollar fifty right now, given the current economic times, and certainly to put something forth higher than that would, you know, be an even greater gamble, and if should that not pass, that's going to put us in a an even worse world of hurt.
So as we prepare to entertain our motion, we can split this into two motions, or we can have one motion that has a rate and a timeline, and if it passes, that will be what we we take. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion of one or combined.
Andrew, I'll move that we go forward with a two-year levy at a dollar fifty.
Okay, it's been moved that we proceed with a dollar fifty per thousand levy for two years. That's the current motion before us. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then, at this time, the school district can launch an information campaign to let voters know that we'll be asking them to approve a two-year replacement levy at the rate of a dollar fifty per thousand on the November third twenty twenty ballot. Thank you, guys. So the next item on the agenda is eight point oh one, and this deals with the Ferndale High School education specifications, which the board has been asked to review and will eventually be asked to approve. I want to note that the board has already had access to the two hundred and twenty-four-page EdSpecs document, which is also posted for public review on Board Docs. According to the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, the purpose of the educational specifications, usually referred to as EdSpecs, is to define and communicate to the architect and engineers the district's goals and requirements for what a given facility would be to accommodate its programs. EdSpecs are required for all projects receiving state construction assistance program funding. That's called SCAP, I think. Is that right, Mark?
Correct.
Per W A C three nine two dash three four two dash oh one six, and must be approved by the school board. Dykman Architects completed the EdSpecs with input from district staff, students, and the Ferndale community. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mark Dibok, the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Support Services, to answer any questions about the EdSpecs for the new high school. Thanks, Mark.
You are welcome. Thank you, Andrew, and we have got another surprise guest with us this evening, Tim Jewitt, Principal from Dykman Architects. And he is going to give us a three-minute speed round version of the EdSpec process, and then entertain any questions that you have about them. Tim?
Thanks, Mark. Thanks for having me on, guys, today. I know that you guys are dealing with heavy subjects, and it's late, so I will try and keep this brief. It it is a I am passionate about what we do in general, so I could go on for a while, but I I will try desperately not to. So, um, yeah, so Andrew, the statements that you read addresses a large a large part of what what the framework of this is, and I'll just kind of reiterate that a little bit. From our perspective, this is the instruction kit that we go that we get from from Ferndale School District and Community about what the goals of the project are. From everything from, you know, the numeric program, which is essentially a square footage allotment that helps us get to a budget target, to to all the individual instructions about what's happening in each individual space, and all what are all the features of each of those spaces, and how should they function amongst themselves? But also the adjacencies of how what is what spaces are next to each other and what adjacencies are appropriate and what spaces are what adjacencies are not. So those are the kind of the numeric program, the adjacencies, the the specific detailed functionality of each space. Those are the key components of it. But again, there's also the overall guidelines, design principles, and goals of the project that are also encapsulated in the education. In the EdSpec, the way we approach it is that we're essentially documenting a lot of the process that we went through in doing outreach with the with the community and with the district. So you'll see quite a bit of of that in there as well. So the visioning process, the outreach process will be encapsulated there and how and what those conclusions of that outreach process was. And so you'll see that we build on that in each following deliverable. So when we create created the schematic design booklet that built on that numeric program, we go back and check against that numeric program to make sure we're on target and that we're meeting all of the goals of the project as we move forward. And so it's our reference point throughout the project. So when we get through with design development here in in August, we will be doing the same thing. Going through reviewing, and that's what Jeremy, the planning principal at Ferndale High School, and I have been doing is essentially reviewing the EdSpec work that we have done with individual staff members and each of their individual their programs and their spaces and saying, have we met your intent? Have we're we're reading it, we're we're interpreting it, but are we really getting it? And so we've been going through that process. Again, it serves as kind of the starting point and measuring stick as we move through through the design process. And we go through that and we're levels of refinement. First, it's like, do we have all the spaces? Are they the right size? Are they in the right right relationship? And then we move into, okay, so how are they functioning? Where are they oriented? Where are the doors and the windows? And do they have enough casework and those kinds of things? And then when we and that's kind of what the process and the step we're in right now, when we get to construction documents, we we get to the point where we're reviewing, okay, everything's in the right place. We know where all the windows and the doors and the casework are. Now we need to make sure we've got all the facilities, all the utilities, all the services, data, power, specific pieces of equipment coordinated around and those kinds of things. And so we're working through that. It's, again, just kind of a representation of all of the process that we've been through to get to that to that point, and it's a starting point for us. So.
Okay.
That's a that was a broad, it kind of gives you a sense of how we use it, not only what it Does that help?
That helps. Thanks.
Any, what can I help?
So we're not going to vote to approve these tonight, but are there questions from anyone tonight about anything that you've heard or read to date? Okay, so thank you, Tim, for joining us so late, and thank you, Mark. Like I said, the EdSpecs are really lengthy, and we want to allow ample time for both the board and the public to review them. Therefore, we will wait until our June thirtieth school board meeting to consider approving the EdSpecs. In the meantime, any questions about this document can be directed to Mr. Dibok or Dr. Quinn. The next items on the agenda is the time for sharing by the participants of the board meeting, and so I will first call on, let's see, is Avneet still on? Oh, there, yeah, of course. Avneet, student, school board sharing.
Yeah, so the school year is about to come to an end. The last day of school is on June nineteenth, this Friday. So people are just turning in their last assignments and getting ready to finish off the year. The seniors have graduated. There is a small celebration. I have a couple of questions, though, about coming back to school in September. So, um, we're expected to come back to school in September, and everyone's supposed to have masks on, if I'm correct?
That's the current guidance.
I was just wondering, do we have a date set for one more coming back to school?
I'll have to refer that question to the district staff.
Okay. But yeah, the school year is about to end, so everything's just pretty much done already. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. All right, the school board, our elected school board members, anything to share?
Well, I'll just pay back on Avneet's questions, and while we have a calendar with a date to start, I think and we've had Chris Reichdahl say he hopes we want students back in school. I think there's a lot of hoops to jump through to get to that point. And I think it's still, there's a lot of work ahead of us if you're out, how that really looks. And and I don't think anybody really knows for sure. So moving yeah, they talk about masks. So I it's just, it's still a work in progress. And it's going to take everybody's minds and looking at the guidance that's been laid out before us to decide what can we do? What can we afford? There's not going to be any more money coming. Yet, we're going to be expected to to do a lot of things to work at having a safe environment for both students and staff. And it's going to be a challenge.
And I didn't realize that Dr. Quinn's computer had frozen, and so she may have something to add.
No, I'm sure Leanne did just fine. I I it froze right in the middle of your question, Avneet. What I would just say is we're working on it. And we're in the process of sending out a survey right now. I think, Kelly, it went out today so families and staff can weigh in. Did you maybe that was said?
No, it wasn't. We did send out a survey today, and we already have six hundred thirty-seven family responses. And then we sent out a separate survey for staff as well that we have a close to over two hundred responses as well. So we're trying to look at that to help do that planning that Leanne was mentioning.
And this is. Every family?
Yes, and it's not an anonymous survey. It it asks, what do you want for your child? And and you write down who your child is so that we can actually try to accommodate so that we can actually try to accommodate families.
How long will the survey be open?
We don't have a, a closing date, but we are hoping that most families will complete it by Monday because we're hoping to use that data to begin that planning process and to inform some other processes that we're using in terms of applications.
Yeah, great. All right, anyone else? Yeah.
So this past weekend was graduation, of course. As a new school board member, it's the first time I've participated in something like that, aside from my own child's graduation the year before. It was totally different than anything I had imagined up until maybe about April of this year. Then, you know, started thinking outside the box. So it was fantastic. I was great to see the students with their excitement, their nerves there. Thank God, I'm done. And to see the parents, to actually see the graduate come by, and the parents right there in their car, just, you know, 20 feet away or so, and putting those families together as they went through this life event. It was an honor to be there, and I look forward to at least three more years of, of doing that. And they'll probably be very different, hopefully.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I was so impressed with how well-planned it was. And, and it seemed, at least for me, standing by the table handing diplomas, that it was going without a hitch. I mean, it was really well-planned. And I particularly liked the fact that each student had a couple of minutes on the stage, and it wasn't, you know, just to get through one right after another. It was really nice, although I know for those people who were there for four and a half hours, it was a long day. But I, I thought it was really nice for the students to have a lot of individual recognition on the stage and by the big 2020 sign and stuff. So hats off to the district and, and high school, to, to the principal and, and everything for getting it done so well.
Yeah, whoever organized that needs a pat on the back.
I think it was Jeremy and his crew a lot.
Jeremy and David.
That was nice. And there was a couple of glitches where I had to, because I have to ride my wheelchair, and the place, the Ferndale School is so old. It didn't have access for a wheelchair. So I had to, we had to work it out until I could get around to where the, where the kids were. But anyways, there was a poster, and I think Linda and I enjoyed reading a lot of the posters that were on the cards. But the one that stuck out was the one that said, "Sit down graduations are sold 2019." And that was so, that was so awesome. But there was a lot of good participation as far as the parents went, too.
Yeah.
That was good. Whoever, whoever put this together, put it on, made sure all the people were in their places at certain times, they need a pat on the back, for sure.
All right, I'll now go to superintendent sharing.
Oh, I've shared plenty tonight. Thank you.
And executive team, anything to share? Okay. Then that concludes the public portion of tonight's meeting. At this time, the board will go into another executive session for approximately 30 minutes to hear an update on contract negotiations and to discuss personnel issues. No decision or action will be taken while we're in an executive session or after the executive session is over. When we are done, we will reconvene into our open meeting only for the purpose of adjournment. So with that, I'll say goodnight, and we'll go into executive session again. Scott, how do you want to do this?
Kelly's already sent you an invite, so.
Okay.
Before, you just leave this meeting, check for that invite, go to the meeting, and then come back to this moment.
Do you save this meeting?
No, we're supposed to leave it.
Okay.
And then join the one that Kelly just sent, another invite.
Okay, we have finished our executive session. So we'll give just a second for folks to sign back on. There's Dr. Erickson. That's good. Linda? It's Jessie. Good. I bet Leanne will be here in a second.
So the diehards who are still attending, are those like the our greatest fans or something? No?
Uh, yeah, I don't know.
They went to sleep and didn't turn their computer on.
Maybe so.
If we all just yell really loud, maybe we can wake them up.
Now we have Okay, well, as I, we have our quorum. So as I mentioned prior to the executive session, no decisions nor actions were taken during the executive session. And so we are convening the meeting now to adjourn. And so the meeting is hereby adjourned. And we will meet again on the 30th of June. Thank you all for attending. Good night.
Thank you all. Good night.